November the 5th and we are officially opening this meeting and we are recording and all members of the board are present. Please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, so for number two, citizen's statements and petitions, is there anybody in the audience or online who would like to address the board? Yes, sir.
I would like to make a statement as a, I guess, as a citizen and it just has to do with the fire department. I think everybody saw that luckily there's no loss of life, but the tragedy in Milford with a long time business from, I mean, it's been around so long when I was a cop, I used to do details there in Milford. And it, and it burned down. What I thought was notable was that Mendon, the Mendon Fire Department was called for mutual aid with the ladder truck. And I sent the message to the chief because, you know, I have a lot of friends in public safety and it was a well-known fact that for a while Mendon, Mendon's Fire Department was removed from the mutual aid list because they were considered substandard. And I said to the chief that this is a real feather in his cap and this whole department. And I wanted them to know as a, as a citizen, how, you know, proud and grateful and impressed I was and you know, his answer to me was that his, his group performed flawlessly and it's been a seven year effort. And he said, the way they performed the other night, he thinks they're going to be higher up on a mutual aid card down in Milford because they brought in their equipment, they set their equipment up and they did exactly what they were supposed to do in a mutual aid situation. And I just wanted to publicly say, and I told him I was going to do this, that it was just very impressive and it was the second mutual aid response that they did on that day because they had to go down to Blackstone and help them put out a fire. You know, somebody's chimney had, had a chimney fire, so I just wanted to just say to Chief Bangma and all of his staff, you know, well done.
So. Thank you. Yes. Thank you, Chief. And that's right. That is a, that is a big deal.
It's a really.
It's our little sister city, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, it was, an engine was called first and car one responded as well. And then they struck a, they struck a fourth alarm, which surprisingly is the only fourth alarm, four alarm fire in Milford's known history.
Wow.
So yeah, the ladder truck was then called afterwards for an attack from the rear. So a busy day for the fire department and yeah, by all accounts performed really admirably.
Great. Thank you, Citizen Merely. All right, on to community events and announcements. I'd like to announce the first, second and third place winners of the second annual scarecrow contest in Mendon. So first up was, I guess we'll go from third, do you know who were the K-pop demon hunters or did the K-pop demon hunters come here to Mendon?
Don't have their. Was it a home? Is that, is that a big now?
Those private residents. So whoever were the K-pop demon hunters, which is all the rage right now, you know, got third place. Second place was given to Joint Operations, which is the dispensary up on Route 16. And first place was given to Vanderbach Farms up on Lowell Street. So thank you to everybody who participated and thank you to Katie for our wonderful select board scarecrows out front. I got a kick out of them. So did my family every time we drove by. It was a lot of fun. All right. The next one up is scouting for food is this Saturday, November 8th at Clough School, starting at 8:00 AM. And so ever since pandemic, the deal is that you drive into Clough and the scouts will take that food right out of your vehicle. You don't even need to get out and they will sort it and, and stack it into the food pantry. This year with all the uncertainty around food benefits, it's more important than ever that you do what you can to donate non-expired food to the, to the event. This is something that the pantry relies on every year as an annual event to help restock. This is done nationwide. It's not just being done in our town. But please consider showing up on Saturday with some food for our pantry.
Yeah, can I just add, there is a list out in circulation of the, some items that are in particularly high demand. So I know I've seen it shared on Facebook, on the Mendon Bulletin Board page. So if anybody is wondering what to get, there's some guidance because there are some things that a lot of people just tend to donate and so they don't need, they don't need, right, well, and, but I mean, they don't need canned green beans, for example. I think that there are, there's a list of things that they, that they do need, that they really try to stock up. And, and you're right, it is not just food, it's paper goods as well.
Paper goods, it's pet foods. And Jeremy is pointing out to me that it is nine to one, nine AM to one AM, one, 1:00 PM. Yeah, I'm sorry.
So it's nine to.
So yeah, great. All right, on to number four, we are going to be continuing the hearing for Vanderbach Farm to November the 19th. And we're just waiting for some more information from the police department and from town council so we can accurately answer the questions that were brought up during the first public meeting.
Yep, I've got some answers on parking, waiting for building commissioner final answer on parking. The traffic study, so Chief Currie's on, but PD has started to get some proposals from folks, but a full-on traffic study for a row is going to take probably months, weeks at least to get a vendor procured study report and what we have again. So we can have an idea of what that's going to look like, but by the 19th, we'll have the zoning and parking question certainly. And we'll have some update from PD, but we're not going to have a on a traffic study.
I mean, having asked for it, I wasn't expecting a full traffic study. I was just like, the public safety to weigh in on their recommendations, you know, based on their, their knowledge of traffic patterns and roadway and things like that. A study later date is fine, but I mean, we posted a speed limit on that road based on one person's decision that the, the chief can set the speed limit. And it's, I expected 25 and I think it's 30.
No, I think it's 25.
It's not 25 because I know that Washington Street's lower than level.
Chief, do you know the speed limit on level?
Nothing like putting them on the spot.
Yeah.
Well, but I just, I just, I just wanted.
It's a, it's not posted 25, so it's going to be 30.
Okay.
Yeah, so I just kind of, I think whatever public safety field deems is reasonable without a full study. Get a full study, that's great, but I don't think that should hold.
Okay. So you're just talking about even accommodating rule changes to make it safer?
Yeah.
Okay. Driving down the street.
Well, there's two different, there's two different ways. I don't know if I'm wanting to use the special, but there's two ways to set the speed limit. And I'm sure Chief Currie can set me straight on it, but you know, one of them is to do a study over time. And the other one is just, we can just believe we have the authority to set the speed limit. Even lining the road on level would be beneficial, given the way, but I think somebody has manually lined the road.
Yeah, somebody has definitely.
Around the corners, but just a little thing like that would be beneficial, I think, so.
You can talk to John about lining, but I don't think the road's wide enough to actually line it.
Safely. I think if, I think if you put a line on both sides, now you, you don't have cars being able to pass next to each other in the same place on the roadway. You know, and not go over the line.
These are all questions.
All good questions.
But I can't answer now because I'm a resident.
I'll get together with John this week and we'll go up there and go over it too, from a highway perspective, for traffic and for the police perspective. And I'll get the fire chief too, just for engine wise and his, his responses over there.
More wax and I have the due diligence, you know, respond to what we heard.
All right, we good?
Yeah.
All right, moving on to number five, which is correspondence. And so in your packet on page 71 is a letter sent from Mr. Richard Watts. And he's asking us to reconsider the current flag policy that the board adopted a few years ago and has since talked about as recently as three meetings ago, four meetings ago. And so he's asking that we follow the flag code, which outlines directives on when it may be flown at half staff. And so it talks about principal figures of the US government, state officials are in times of national tragedy. He asks us to reconsider amending the policy so that they are directly aligned with the flag code. Instead of allowing the select board chair to make provisions as he or she sees fit. So that's sort of the scope of the letter. And I thought since we received this from a resident and went out of their way to write this letter and also we have talked about it recently. Our flag is at half staff right now because of a national request. So like anytime the, the president or the governor requests that we lower it, we lower it, so.
Former vice president?
Yes, former vice president. So, and that's handled by, the, the flag raising and lowering is handled by the police department.
It was.
Okay.
Now Dan Byer and Jack McClellan, kind of by, Jack McClellan being the first person in in the morning. And then so him and, him and Dan have the system on it. But yeah, we do check the, and we're on the listserv for the governor's flag status, which is why it's lower.
So I'm opening up the conversation to the board again. What are your thoughts? Mike, maybe you can remind me, I mean, we had some, you said we had some open items. What did we leave open from the last discussion?
Well, I think we, we we said we revisit and the one action that was left, actually, I, I agree. I, what I like to, I don't want our policy to supersede the code of conduct that is followed nationally. So I think there's an action to make sure, let's make sure we understand what that code of conduct is, bring that back and make sure we're not, if we agree as board. But that was sort of one item. Otherwise, my recollection is keeping the policy the same. Aside from that point was sort of the go forward until we revisit it.
Yeah.
But there was no re-date target for revisiting.
Yeah, and so the, I want to be clear that the, the flag code are guidelines and they're not actually adopted by anybody. But they are followed. And so that's, that's one of the big differences here is that essentially every executive order, order in our government agency allows for this type of flexibility regardless of the code. So that's, that's kind of one of those, like, yes, sir.
Yeah, the other point is that there's a section in the flag code that designates authority to heads of staff and other agency heads. And some people are reading that, that it gives authority to rolling municipalities as well as being their own agency.
Mr. Chairman, my, my memory was when we had this discussion, when we originally set that policy was, that was the, the the guidance that town council gave us. Because this came up, this actually came up because someone was asking to fly a different type of on the, over town hall. Then the policy was, was revisited just to make it clear that it was only the, the US flag and whatever the policy said. And that was when it gave us the latitude to designate it to the chair. See if there was a local official or a local president or somebody who was deserving of that recognition. You know, as the, the chair could make the call because it was sort of kind of to get a vote. Yeah, I, I remember, I think it was more to make sure that what was flown on the town flag pole would be official flag, not flags that had any political.
Right, right.
So, but that, and then, so you take that step further and you say, well, what are the, is there a need based on this? I mean, somebody thinks there might be need, but I, I actually, I agree. I would not want us to not contradict the supersede accepted policy, even if it's not voted upon, to your point. But I think the, the lengths of times are fairly, are laid out in the code of conduct for different levels of, of public positions, things like that. So I mean, I kind of, I mean, I agree with the letter because I think the letter kind of reinforced what I was thinking anyway. And I would say, do we want to revisit the idea of maybe not the flag behind us? So I'm not sure if it's official or not, but why shouldn't the municipality have an official flag that we could fly underneath the federal or the state or however you want to.
Yeah, we have to look at the policy.
It's, so it says, it should be.
Such a state.
Yeah, the only three are in that word.
Right, but you could, the local municipality, especially in the area of honoring local municipal.
Oh, to figure.
Flag, just a thought. I mean, seems to be about 50/50 if you look at the policies of local municipalities.
Well, that makes it easier.
How did, how did you, yeah, okay.
So I, well, I was downloading all the flag policies I could look at. Most of them do have provisions for the authority to lower flags for staff. Not all of them, some of them.
And I believe ours was modeled after existing municipal flag policies.
Yeah.
I mean, admittedly, in the moment when we created that policy, it was more about protecting the town from having to make political decisions. Right? And so that intent wasn't, we weren't even really assuming this intent at the time. It's been used that way and that, you know, since then, but at the time it was about not getting political.
I mean, I think we also left it, I mean, the common sense seems to rule the day. Right, so this is why I think we, well, as the policy adds is, let's move forward with that if we revisit, revisit it. If we, you know, need to fine tune it, fine tune it, I think the fact that we've got some input here, we should at least speak about it as we are. And we can keep it open and revisit if we, you know.
Yeah, I agree. That's why I asked to have it put on the agenda because I mean, I think it's important to keep talking about it and it's important to people to keep talking about it. Sorry, do you want to come up and have a chat?
Ronnie Tenney from 60 C North Ave. So just from the other side of this, from as another resident, I find it nice that, that we would fly the flag at half staff for, and for whatever reason, it could just be a resident, right? But especially for, you know, maybe veterans or people that were, I, I, I use the case that, which probably brought this up, which was the lowering of it at half mass for Bill Ambrosino. And Bill gave so much time to this town of his own accord that I, I, for not, to not fly it at half mass would almost seem insulting. So if, if, from a, a different perspective from another resident, my opinion would be that to keep it the way that you guys have it, that you would, whether it be a vote of the board, if you change it that way, or, or the chair, see with the discretion to be able to, to lower it, I think is, is the right way to do it. Because the, 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 the flag code does give, from what I researched anyhow, does give local, the local authority the ability to do it. So I just wouldn't want to see you guys take it away.
Yeah, I mean, my perspective is it's like the most respectful thing you can do for a person, right? That, that was my opinion at the time. It's still my opinion. Yeah, I don't, I don't feel like it, and I feel like if you're, you know, that the discussion on why it's insulting or why it's harmful should be had in public and we should chat about that. I, you know, I'd like to hear how we can correct our wrongs to be more right. But this just felt really right and I think that's why I chose to do it. That's why Mr. Merely in the past, when he was chair, decided to do it for another individual. I mean, that's just, I hope we don't have to do it often.
Agreed, agreed.
So thank you, I appreciate it. Um, does the board have anything else to add?
I, I didn't recently look at our current flag policy, but I believe it came up that there isn't anything about the, the duration of, like, how long to leave the flag at half mass.
There is for only certain instances in the flag code, so like for presidents.
Right, so I think there could be clarity in, in the policy for the future, I think. With the idea that like, yeah, just to keep some constraints in there that maybe are not currently. I mean, I think we're assuming that everybody will, you know, you know, use common sense and, you know, make decisions collaboratively, but it's also, I think, good practice to have the, the, the policies give that structure.
I think that's something that we can bring back to the board and be reasonable about.
And then the code, if you go down the code, it's basically the, the general is from you have to, would be the lowest common denominator and everybody above that seemed to be a more extended fixed period.
Right, it's nuts. Okay. All right, thank you, everybody. All right. So number six is meetings, meeting minutes for approval, which are from October 1st, 2025. Did everybody get their edits in and everybody feels okay with October's minutes, November 1st minutes? Okay, so then I'd be looking for a motion to approve the minutes.
So moved.
Second, discussion, all those in favor? All those against, motion passes, thank you. And number seven, October 15th and October 29th, meeting minutes for circulation should be in your packet. Please send any correction, what?
I overpromised. I have a really long meeting. I'm going to send them.
So are both missing?
The other one was just the vote, the appointment.
Right, okay.
Send that both.
All right, so you will see them tomorrow. And then you can look at those and get your edits back to Katie, please. Number eight is, you should have seen this email come around. It's the Mass Trails Grant Acceptance. So we received $100,000, which is often matching, is that right?
We're matched, it's matched by a private donation.
So that is to make the trails in the Muddy Brook area accessible. And I think it's pretty awesome.
Yeah, it's four, four miles of new trails, building, wardwalk, bridge and scenic viewing area that are ADA accessible. Meander through different ecosystems, including open fields, forest, ponds, street crossings.
Very exciting, so I feel, yeah.
Yeah, it's pretty neat when we get that like official trail work money.
Is there, is there an estimate of when this project would be completed?
Grant needs to be expended by December 2026, so.
Oh, okay.
This is a $100,000 matching grant and private donation was made through.
Of $39,241.25 to match, that's our local match. So it's a $140,000 project.
So we just have to accept it and then allow the town administrator to sign that paperwork when it comes across. So I just need a motion for that.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
I have a question. Are those trails going, do you remember we accepted the, the land for the self-storage area that was going to contain a parking lot for said trails? So is that going to be the parking lot?
I believe so because that's who the donor was.
Oh, that's awesome.
I know they were thinking about also the other side, but there wasn't really any, we were going to have to use space from the sanctuary, you know, and that was going to be difficult.
Yeah, it's great when things come together.
Yeah, it's pretty cool.
Thanks, Ronnie.
Thanks.
All right. Correspondence for the grant?
That was just the backup.
That's just the back.
Oh, the, the letter.
The letter, okay. Um, all right, so number nines, one, one. Sorry, shoot, I got caught up in the discussion. I apologize. So all those in favor of the acceptance of Mass Trails Grant and having the town administrator sign the grant paperwork?
Aye.
Sorry. Aye, all those against? And the motion passes. That's why we have a whole board to keep me in order. Okay, number nine, the town administrator bylaw drafts is something we're going to review and it's going to go to the general bylaw review committee. And hopefully make it on for the May, for the May meeting, town meeting. And I'll just let the town administrator talk about what he's put together there.
Yeah, so you all seen the draft that I sent? So this is modeled after the Town of Upton Special Act, which created their town manager. And then peel back in some, some spaces. It will go to the general bylaw review committee, but I didn't want to send them anything that wasn't consistent with what this board viewed for the bylaws. Principally, there's a few things in there that says I can appoint people. So whether, how you want to truncate that, do you want to say not police and fire? Do you want to say one way or the other? Do you want to bring that in? Contracts, I think I wrote, I can sign up to $50,000, I think I wrote. I'm not giving this, I'm not sure how much I would do. And then a line about being principally responsible for delivering a balanced budget to this body. So in, you know, the Association of Town Finance Committee's reading of Mass General Law, absent a bylaw or a vote, a local vote otherwise, it is the finance committee's responsibility to present a budget to town meeting. There are volunteer board and I think that's a lot, and then put a budget together when there's staff to do it. So I want to make an affirmative declaration at that point. And then some other housekeeping things in there that just establish roles and responsibilities. I've read through it, mark it up. It's, like I said, none of it's, or the end of it is original my writing. It's, works in, works in Upton. Well, they just lost their town manager, so maybe.
Should, so do you want, if they have like markup items, do you want them to send that through you or to send that to Tom Merely? In the bylaw committee?
Why don't you send it to me? We can have a second discussion because one of you wants to see something, but the other four don't, you know, vice versa. I would want kind of a unified draft going over to general bylaw rather than try to sort through priorities.
To give us the due dates, Jeremy.
And possibly also a word version of this.
Certainly, I will send it before this meeting's up.
It's pages 108 to 114 of the PDF.
There's scans, so. You have a 19. So for the December 3rd meeting, if you can have your, I think you can have your comments in, in advance of that. We'll send out the packet on the first, so by the end of November, yeah. And then we can discuss it at that meeting.
So like letter H, you don't want to surface the contract?
We also have the personal policy reviewing. Did we set a date for that?
We didn't set a date for that, but.
I wonder if we can add that to like the future agenda with second.
Promise to have it back by mid-December at the meeting, but.
That sounds like a very loose promise from us.
Didn't have my whiteboard.
Okay, well, we'll get, we'll get.
That's it. Yes, yes.
Yeah, it's good because I, I couldn't remember what we said and so I had that thought. I'm like, do I have to read through all of that before tonight? So actually I just.
Yes, I, I don't want to. It's, it's sitting on my table straight here, but it's slowly moving toward the bottom, so. Yeah, October, when did we do that? October 15th? All righty, is there anything else? Did you lose power?
One of the outlets might be dead.
Again?
That's right, I gotta.
You know, just.
So the, the power switch for that is downstairs on the first floor on the. Did you kick the power switch on the side?
He's doing the same thing.
I see the light.
Did that work? Does that work for you?
Yes.
Yes.
You know, they used to do this by candlelight. Um, all right, so I, is there any more commentary on the town administrator bylaw draft?
I think it's great that we're gonna have this, that have it all qualified, we've talked about that for a while, so.
I remember when we were doing goal setting and Jason said like, how do we make sure, Mike said, how do we make sure this happens, like, how do we make sure it stays in radar, I was like, it's on my radar. Um, yeah, I appreciate, um, your all's support for having a bylaw like this, I think it. Sets the, sets the swim, swim lane sort of thing, um, and it, you know, another step to professionalizing the, the town's, uh, professional operations.
Can, can you check just the time of council, I mean, she's gonna know this is coming spring, which is understand what if any impact this has on the town charter. She might look at you, ooh, don't do a bylaw, if you plan on doing a charter, et cetera, et cetera, so just kind of, we can get her way in to say. No big deal, yeah, it's a natural first step, or maybe she might say, you might be able to pause on that if you have charters, if you have your mind.
Conversation we had at one point, I don't remember if it was, um, at a meeting or just on the side, was that charter would supersede. Um, in other words, the, the process of voting at town, voting the charter, it would take care of the superseding whatever bylaw was in place. But it's not a good, it's not a bad idea to get a clarification on.
We might have to aim it in that direction.
I mean, charter is a much longer process.
Right, exactly. That's why I, I think this is a good step, is to get it memorialized someplace somehow.
I think so.
By lawyers.
And then, so then you're not creating it from whole class?
Right.
Uh, also, it separates the political board from the operational running of the town.
Correct.
Yeah, I, I said this at passing with Jason with science and report, also in there is that I would sign the payroll and expense warrants, so it wouldn't wait the two-week cycle to come here, um, to sign.
We just don't come in and went S V D zone call?
I mean, it has happened once, but that's it, so. Um, all right, so number ten, the, the, the most important item on our agenda, can I, the town holiday party update? Katie, why don't you let us know what's going on with that?
So there were some options, um, one would be town hall, um, the parking is an issue, just saying we had the senior center meeting and there wasn't enough parking for everyone. Um, so there was a workaround for that, that could be an option, and then I was looking into Willowbrook as well, um, they can accommodate up to a hundred people. Um, there was a suggestion of end zone, um, I checked, Vanderbilt, they can only accommodate fifty, so. It's pretty much between town hall and Will, Willowbrook I'm thinking right now.
So we were, you know, we had ju, I thought town hall was a great idea, um, she just brought up, uh, we had just talked about parking yet, especially today, so. What does the board think about either shuttling people, um, using?
From Clough or something, it's gonna be December, right, so we, we could have snow again, like we did last year.
Last year there was an ice storm, I think.
Yeah.
I, I think, what, what, what was the number that we had the last two years, it hasn't been up, up to a hundred, right? But I think Willowbrook's a great idea, you got plenty of parking in central, you wouldn't have to shuttle anybody, and it's, you know.
We'd have to use their parking if we used town hall, so. Um, yeah, I don't mind Willowbrook, I've had an eagle.
And you checked all the other, um, places and nobody else.
Yeah, see, they're too small, too small, too expensive, um, we're working on a licensing issue for PJs at Miss Menden. Um, about there being multiple liquor licenses for the Imperial Room as one address and the diner as another address, and only one was transferred. So Imperial Room.
Imperial Room's at Lindwell, right?
So, yeah, even if it, even if it works for everything else, there isn't an active liquor license provider in the space. And then I enjoyed, and I think most folks have enjoyed, um, a party at Galliford's, and I think they do a nice job, um. I think it's important for the town to. Nothing against Galliford's.
Well, just write it around, that's all.
Um, so we'll, we'll dig in on Willowbrook a little bit more.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's like a, it's a sprawling space with, you know, pockets of rooms to hang out.
I can walk there, it's cool.
And Brendan can walk there. All right, anything else? All right, we have to wear an ugly sweater or anything?
What, what dates are?
Oh, right, dates.
No, no, no.
No ugly sweaters, Mike?
Would not be my suggestion.
You don't know what, what can and worms are open and up.
Um, so there's, uh, the fifth, sixth, and the seventh?
Of December?
The twelfth through the fourteenth, and the, the nineteenth through the twenty-first, so the three weeks in December.
Willowbrook is open for all dates right now.
Okay.
And today, I spoke with them.
Okay, I mean, I, yeah, well, I'm going to be away in early September, so like, I guess, you know. It's not all about me, but if it works out, I would like to be there, so I'm back, I'm away from the sixth to the sixteen.
I'm going from the seventh to the fourteenth.
I'm gone from the twelfth to the fifteenth, so we're all gone that. Twelve through the fifteenth, yeah, maybe I'm back on the fourth.
Are you thinking about using it one of those places where they're normally closed, cuz I'll think, I think closed in the afternoon or something.
Um, I didn't, I just, I mean, I haven't taken them right down there, I think to see their face.
Yeah, so it's like a, what night have we been doing it, Friday night, right? We've been doing it on Friday.
I'm good on all Friday.
And this.
Usually it's a night when there's terrible weather.
That's the snowstorm.
I mean, it could hypothetically be in early January.
Yes, good.
It's not like actually.
Or the week between Christmas and New Year's.
Yeah. Yeah, I'm definitely available that week. It's not, that's not a bad idea either. Little post-holiday, pre-New Year.
Twenty-sixth.
Right, that's, well, we could put it on the twenty-seventh on a Saturday.
Yeah, I guess we could check, I'm, I'm open for the nineteenth, the twenty-sixth, or the twenty-seventh.
Does seem like reasonably tight, but how about you, Mike?
I'm open, I go first, I'm in the nineteenth.
You think the nineteenth?
Only, I mean, I think if people have plans over holidays, the, between Christmas and New Year's, I could get.
Right. Similarly, like, there are a lot of, like, holiday parties, and that was the other thing in past years, not everybody can come because they have other holiday parties, so I think, yeah. I think there's no, like, ideal time, unfortunately, but it'd be great.
Let's aim for the nineteenth, and if, you know, there's a little weather, it'll be on Route sixteen.
Yeah, which is better than driving to.
Drive better than driving the back roads to the zoo.
What do people think about this January second, too?
I'm also fine with that.
I'm, yeah, I'm open to that.
That's probably better, than the twenty-sixth.
Yeah.
That's reasonable, something, I'm also still, I have to put meats off, so.
And there, there's less chance of ugly sweaters, I think, if we move it to the second.
Oh, I'm gonna wait. Minus lights, you say so.
Point out to the dress code part of the TA bylaw.
Um, is, uh, are the brothers doing the parade, parade, let's find out if that needs to go on.
Uh, it's December, it's a Friday, December fifth, I believe, it's on the Friday. They've already recruited judges for.
I just wanna make sure we get it on the, um.
Upcoming events.
Events.
Well, do we need to approve it?
Probably also need to approve it, yeah. Alrighty.
Friday, December fifth at six P M.
Maybe we can ping them for a, a letter of request. Um, all right. Before we get to the town administrator's report, are we gonna, uh, yes, when do we wanna do the sign? Do that, right?
Yeah.
Okay, let's do it now. All right, before we get to the town administrator's report, um, we received a, a request to put up a sign on public land, but we received it on, uh, Tuesday night. And their event is, uh, just two days after our next meeting, so it's. It's a, you know, not enough time for us to put this on the agenda, but it's something that's very timely, that if we just don't do right now, it's not gonna get done, so. Um, it's a request from O L B to advertise their holiday fair, this is something that we have accepted every year that I've been around. Um, it would be up from now until the twenty-second of November, um.
And it's the regular lawn size, this looks huge, but it's the regular lawn size.
Knows it, yeah, just as an aside, is it a good idea to, to put these type of questions into that TA bylaw?
Exactly what we were talking about right before the meeting, because I think traditionally, um. It was to maintain, uh, like, town culture and morality was sort of the intent of bringing it before the board, but. I think that those are mandates that we should deliver to the town administrators, so like, yeah, long-term. I, I think that the TA should be approving these, and then if we were, see it and reject, we can bring it to a meeting and of course override it, but.
No, I, I think as long as, you know, it complies with the signed bylaw, once that gets fixed.
Right.
Which we're fixing it to be content neutral, so.
Great, so. This is just one, one of those, another administrative task, it just, you know, burdens the, the agenda.
So in terms of the agenda and meeting law, this is a request not reasonably known forty-eight hours ahead of time, and has a time sensitivity matter to it, so even though it's not on the agenda, we can still deliberate and go it on.
So are you looking for a motion to allow a sign?
I am looking for a motion to allow the sign until November twenty-second. Make that motion, second, any discussion?
Is it, is it, I, I didn't, wasn't able to read it, it's at the island on.
Yeah, on, on the top of Maple, um, and I just didn't, I said, um.
Is that the one also in Providence and, or, uh, Bellingham?
Actually doesn't say in this. Says, we could put a sign in town, last year it was the top of Maple.
All right, so, uh, let's amend that motion to get clarity on where it is and.
Could approve it for the locate, the standard locations.
Just make a motion, we delegate details about numbers and positions to the town administrator. Do we have an amendment?
Okay. Any more discussion on the amendment? Any more discussion on the original motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all those against, motion passes, please try to get your sign requests in early. Um, all right, town administrator's report, number eleven.
Uh, yeah, so my first thing, I'm going to preempt the first future agenda item, because I had meetings on it, so town land, inventory of land. Uh, with town planner about what our approach is going to be with this, about what. Uh, piece of information we currently have, how we marry them together, where our gaps are, so the town planner and the conservation agent. Chair of land use, um, are, are working together on that, use the open space, um, recreation plan, there's a matrix there that has a lot of information on it. So I'm scheduling a meeting for the week of the seventeenth, um, so I'm gonna invite you to it, if you're around the week of the seventeenth, uh, between the, um, staff and, you know. Kind of what, so our plan is we kinda see it now, this matrix or T chart that we have is, is kind of every piece, which includes, you know, stuff. The three upridge road, abandoned housing, things like that, so it doesn't have to necessarily be a, and then all of our needs on the other side, and so it doesn't necessarily have to be. We want this to be recreation fields, the need can be secure all abandoned buildings to mitigate liability to the town, things like that. Um, so we're working right now to get all of our data sources together, so we have a known universe, um, and then pile on uses afterward. Keep going to it. Um, the town meeting walkthrough, help out a town moderator, is tomorrow night at six thirty, it's an all remote, all virtual event. Um, so we'll be going through the warrant, we'll have various sponsors of warrant articles there, I'll talk through the select ones. Um, and, uh, we've had the annual town meeting, had more folks added than last year's special town meeting, so. I hope it's a good exercise for everyone involved, if nothing else, it gives folks who sponsor articles a chance to dry run their kind of stump speech about, about whether it's a sponsor. Um, we've had them over three articles at town meeting, uh, one is article, I think it's eight or nine, which is a duplicate of another one. It says sections three point one, three point two, and three point three, and the next one says all sections of three except three point four. So it's the same thing said two different ways, and I thought it was three different articles, um. So Dylan pointed that out to me right after it was signed, I mean, or maybe danced it, um, and then we'll be passing over the, um. Kayak rental piece, um, and then the shared driveway and recessed lot by law.
Okay.
Um, planning board voted to pass over that.
Okay, all right, that was the one that I was expecting to have a lot of discussion.
So we are, we made sure we, we buttoned up our knowledge on who has the authority to pass over something without debate. And it's the, the, um, entity that sponsors the article, which in this case was the planning board.
Okay.
You might see it as a citizen petition in the future, but right now, we'll pass over it. We've been in active negotiations with three of our four labor unions, um, they've gone really well, um. It's, it's early on, so we haven't gotten to all the time how much money they want, how much we're willing to give, um, and it's, it's gone well. Um, and, uh, we're trying to schedule the fourth one right now, um, I think we'll have an executive session at our next meeting on the nineteenth. To kind of delve into the particulars on that, but it's been going on, it's been taking up a lot of my time, um, but things are, things are good, um, the, the town relationships are good. So I've been, I've, I've been happy with everybody involved. Um, I have TA bylaw here, but we talked about that, um, I met with the council on aging today, um, so through ARPA, we, uh, funded a. Mini feasibility, a alternatives analysis, uh, for senior center placement, and looked at, um, expanded place, looked at twenty-three North Ave, the tough, existing tough library. Um, and then looked at, um, eight Morrison Drive, the, um, shell of the building that's currently there. Um, and the reports in draft form, I'll, of course, share it when, when we have it finalized, we don't have cost estimates in there right now, that's the second piece that we're doing. Um, the Morrison Drive part seems to be not feasible for a number of reasons, uh, which are laid out in the report, um, so we're not spending time cost estimating that. Um, but we will say why we did do that, um, then we'll cost estimate the expanded place and what it would look like at the library to have a joint facility there. And then evaluate that next to our proposals at three North Ave, um, uh, kind of stoplight style matrix, what does each site does well, and then, um. Cost estimates at the bottom, um, so there's certainly lots of discussions to come still, um. Where this project fits in with the other large needs around town, how, uh, how. Um, the board wants to prioritize those, I think you should all be proud of Elena, she answered, uh, how does the board prioritize this with, with, by saying, we'll have lots of discussions, we'll talk about it, and I can't speak for the board. Um, so did, it was a, it was a good non-answer answer, um.
Yes.
Put on the spot this morning, um. But, uh, yeah, that, that report is, um, is forthcoming, COA was mostly interested in when are we gonna put this on the ballot again? I shouldn't say that, most of the questions were, when are we gonna put this on the ballot again, I'm not speaking for the whole. Um, some other, um, inconsequential meeting, well, some other larger meetings, um, our permitting software, um, that. Contract is up in the spring, uh, it's expensive, it does a good job, but it's expensive, and there are other things that do good jobs, so. Brought together everyone who uses viewpoint or could have a need to put their permits or desire to put their permits online, um, to see what they want. Uh, what viewpoint does well, but it doesn't, so we're gonna be demoing a bunch of other products, um, and then seeing, get proposals and see all those stack up.
You can include me in that.
Sure. Principal user is building, uh, but we want conservation, select board, counselor, highway, fire, yeah.
Yeah, it's, it's robust. I don't know, expensive.
Twenty-four thousand dollars a year.
Nothing for an enterprise, but a lot for this.
Right.
It should be half, like, most of our software packages are.
Yeah, the, the expanding, that, the capabilities that has, though, to be used broadly, beyond permitting, is very clear.
And I don't think it is right now, it's not.
It's not can use.
So it's twenty five thousand dollars.
Yes.
Um, yeah, absolutely. Um, then I have a meeting on property and casualty insurance for next year, next week. Um, so all, all the talk has been about health insurance and health insurance premiums. Um, I think property and casualty markets are a bit more stable. Um, but I'm thankful to be having that initial conversation in November, not May, about what next year looks like. Um, so if it's out of the ordinary, I'll pull back. And then I had a M E C board meeting, uh, the regional dispatch, and still we're kind of treading water until we get a state study about what a merger with Samrak would look like. So nothing, nothing needed to report there. And uh, yeah, that's all, that's all I got.
Can you, can you just repeat, I knew you gave this update last time about uh, health insurance for the town? And what their rationale was, what they were covering and not covering the change.
Uh, yeah, so um, broadly fiscal twenty five thousand insurance premiums, what about nineteen point nine percent? Um, we will likely see levels similar to that, at least in the double digits in the foreseeable future.
Um, retirees went up fourteen point four for the starter.
For the medics supplemental.
They're on calendar year. We just got those rates.
So, um, yeah, we'll have to, we'll have to, definitely didn't budget that much. So when you do medics plans and we're budgeting for a July one start, you know what your medics premiums are going to be through December, but not January through June. So you put a placeholder in there. I don't think I put fourteen percent.
Twelve fifteen percent.
Fourteen point four.
Yeah, so um, I, I don't think we put that much, uh, but there's also, um, within the health insurance line. Um, you know, our deductible piece, there's people who started, you know, there's, there's some churn in it where we may be able to cover it. Even if we didn't initially plan for that. Um, about the coverage piece, um, so Blue Cross Blue Shield put out a notification, um, that they are no longer covering GLP ones. Exempic and their, their other um, similar drugs for weight loss purposes, starting in January, January.
Also, it's starting in January, but we are, our plan, we're covered through the plan year, so we're covered through June.
Um, so they'll still cover it for its original on label use for diabetes. Um, but for weight loss, um, they're not, they're not covering GLP ones. Um, I forget the specifics now because it's a little while ago, but something like Blue Cross Blue Shield, you know, had a, had whatever loss, some large loss. In the, their prior fiscal year, and um, their spend on GLP ones was bigger than their year-over-year deficit.
It was a four million dollar loss and three million of it was GLP ones.
Um, so they, they're trying to figure it out as well. And then there was another, so um, since then, there's been another coverage. Um, issue that's come up with Blue Cross Blue Shield and U S, um, as a health system, you know, you know.
We probably all received a letter.
Yeah, uh, if so, if you have any, um, yeah. No one's going to lose their current, if you're within a course of coverage and they still can't come to an agreement, you'll still be able to use out your, um, the course of whatever the issue is. Uh, we're pretty hopeful, uh, pretty confident.
Yes, I got, I got a letter from, I got a response from our account manager at Maya, who said they're pretty confident that they will come to an agreement. But that it's pretty, it is pretty contentious right now, and that they felt that that letter being sent out was premature. Um, I had four people in my office, I think the day after the letter came out, and um.
Because Hope for Regionals at U S.
That's what's particularly problematic, is they made a deal and now they are part.
So they, her, her response was that, you know, in her, her opinion, they will come to a deal, but she also feels that they'll be a lot more, um. Out there publicly before they come to a deal, so U S will come out, Cross will come out, so there might be some more. Um, things in the media that our employees will see, but right now we're in a holding pattern.
Yeah, that's one of those things, if they don't cover it and then the plan year starts, um, you have to kind of gamble with, do you continue with your provider? And then hopefully they backdate it.
So it would be, and the way it was explained to me is it would be an out of network.
Yes.
Right, so it's not, no coverage, but pretty significant deduction in how the budget turns its own.
Right, and then, so for our folks, if they continue to use it as out of network and we cover, you know, the deductible, that's fine, that's budgeted. Um, it's that, a lot of part of the calculus on what our premium increases are year over year is our loss ratio. Um, so we have these huge out of network expenses that, you know, the, the.
It'll just do everything, right? Okay. That's what I was, wanted to flush that out, I think it was.
Yeah.
Um, alright, so we've got uh, the, did the plan for inventory of land. We have the fee structure and the bylaw, which is with the bylaw committee. Maybe we should pull that off of there, or we should talk about direct fee numbers. We should do one of the two. I guess we'll talk about that next time.
Yeah, we could, we'll commit to making that an agenda item next time we'll have.
Alright, and then the Parks Commissioner appointment, I believe Jeremy is actually working with Parks to finalize this, correct?
Yeah, um, it's, it's been a couple, it's been some moving pieces on this.
To put you under, under the gun.
Uh, but yes, uh, Parks is interested in getting somebody um, appointed quickly. Um, now that they know what they want to do.
Okay.
And uh, will the abacus study be a future agenda item once that is?
Um, yeah, de- definitely. And um. As future, yeah. Um, and one, one other thing, um, that we will do uh, next meeting, so I didn't, to want to put on here as a future thing, or already in the process of doing it. Um, is the tax classification hearing, um, with the Board of Assessors. So on the nineteenth, there will be a joint meeting with the Board of Assessors, um, at six forty when you.
Well, we've got the, there's going to be the continuation of Vanderbach. So.
Yeah.
We'll have to schedule that to fit in.
I put the assessors for six thirty five, and I was going to do Vanderbach at six forty.
Ten minutes.
Uh, there is not, we don't, this community has never done a commercial shift.
No, I know, we have a little discussion, alright, let's, we can split it in ten minutes.
There's been like a presentation before also like that, so I don't, I don't remember how long.
I, I just, I just think taxes could be fixed for, say, fifteen to twenty, but the continuation could go longer, depending on where the information comes back.
Yeah, yeah, that's fine, we can probably do that.
And then if we have folks show up for the public hearing, you know, you need them on.
Yes.
That'd be interesting for them. Okay, does anybody have any additional uh, agenda items they want to throw on here for next meeting or an upcoming meeting in December?
I don't know if it's an agenda item or just housekeeping, whatever, but I'm interested in the, the discussion about the Cook Cemetery or the other.
That isn't a, that is a, yeah, we definitely have to get on that for our next meeting, because we also should get cemetery commission together.
I mean, do we need to put it on a, maybe we need to have the cemetery commission meeting first and then put it on the agenda directly?
You've started speaking.
Yeah, we started a, uh, like a working group of interested folks and scheduled the meeting, and then a couple of folks couldn't make it. And we tried to get a rescheduled meeting and then we haven't got it, so it's been a lot of that.
I, I think we should at least add some direction before they get started.
Okay.
So I, and I don't mind having that conversation, it's good for the community to hear about it. That's a for the community good type of.
Because I know there is, someone had asked me about burial ground space. I know there's the, to, I think it's, there's the Quaker Cemetery on which route there. I think that's the only, I think Swan Dale is sold out, so to speak.
Yes, that's what I've heard about Swan Dale.
Yeah.
Oh, really, that space on George, huh?
Yeah.
So yeah, let's, let's get that on an agenda and we'll talk about, um. Let's see, we can do a quick, the land, so in the land, we'll do this after the land assessment. So in the land assessment, if we could, uh, if there's a way to quickly propose what might even be possible for cemetery. Which is versus what, uh, we don't have to study this, like what's possible for cemetery versus what we have dedicated, like. I'd also be curious if we have land already dedicated for cemetery space that isn't a cemetery right now. Uh, maybe somebody has done some of this work in the past, so.
There was a, there was a discussion a few, several years ago about this place up off of Blackstone Street behind Plaza. It was a private space, and then we talked about the residents, kind of, uh, but the tie wash to it because of the water table. And I think Gary Smith had commented that at the time, there was a pretty exhaustive study done. And the Cook Cemetery, which is, we own, is uh, perfect for that position. It's just an issue of getting that, that roadway um, accessible.
Um, the town, and the town planner was doing a little bit of research on that roadway too, and what are either rights or responsibilities relative to it all.
Is that some of the way that the highway surveyor should contribute to, uh, like that discussion or?
He's working on it, he's talking, I talked to him about it.
Okay.
Yeah, and that's, um, there's a state grant too for currently, you know, non-paved roads, improving them, not, not paving them. But maintenance and, and improvements and upkeep for non-paved roads, um, that we would be able to use or something like that, should we actually own the road.
Alright, we can have a robust discussion about that in summer.
And involve the, you know, property owner who's right there, and this would impact them as well.
And then the other, other issue was, I, I think it's a hot, kind of a housekeeping item, but this Civil War cemetery and the replacement of it. The ultimate, I know they want to keep it where it is, but it's not.
Yeah, they had a, they had a, um, one, one meeting, I think, end of last week, and I haven't talked to, talked to Dan about it yet. I didn't have it on my thing because I've got, I've got no updates about it, the engineer hasn't been out either, so. It was hurry up and get them answered for the start of October, and now it's November, and they haven't given us the answer that we need.
And speaking, speaking about beginnings that haven't begun, um, down on, prefer to have a plain street, that's assume it's done now till the spring, right? Uh, the Verizon wires.
Yeah, I, I don't, I don't know that it is. Um, I haven't got an update from, from those guys in a while.
Verizon hasn't moved anywhere since, as far as I can see.
You know, I forwarded an email to you, Jeremy.
Yeah, and I, yeah, I reached out to that gentleman, um, to try to get a conversation, because I got an email from the developer. After we talked before you sent that to me, um, saying he was having some issues with Verizon, and I said, here's this gentleman who may be able to.
Just to fill in the rest of the board, we had received an email from, um, our resident, who is an engineer for Verizon. Who kind of educated me a little bit on the whole process, that ultimately Verizon does remove the poles. Once it's all done, but that there are other parties besides Verizon and, um, that's not the holdup. For that project, but there are other, other people on the pole that have to make the adjustments, and that's on my street. Verizon pole has been moved.
Yeah.
Sticking out in the road. So he's, and this other gentleman, and the thing is, he said he would love to be able to help us. Um, make all of the responsible parties fix all of the poles that are broken and not, that are non-conform. Because there is a process for it.
I've, I would also love to figure that, like Blackstone's had a lot of, my street, I know it's my street and I drive down it. But it's had a lot of pole strikes in the last few years, it breaks from the storms and stuff.
Yep.
They're all double poles waiting for transition, like all of them, one of them, I just showed this picture to Jeremy, sticking out into the road. It's not, and they just put a cone in front of it, and the cone keeps getting knocked over, of course, because it's sticking in the road. It's just, it's dangerous, and it's holding that work up between Hope Dale and us. And yeah, all that, all that dirt is just going to wash, I think they're in the winter, and they're going to have to bring it all back. It's just, it's wasteful.
So the double poles that we all hate that you're talking about, so right now there's a prohibition on poles that, double poles that last more than ninety days.
Yeah.
There's no enforcement mechanism, so the Municipal Empowerment Act, which was refiled by the governor this session, extends that ninety days to a hundred days. Or a hundred and eighty days, sorry, but then gives an enforcement mechanism to municipalities on non-compliance.
That hasn't been passed yet.
It has not, so, um. So they owe us forty grand or whatever. Um.
Sweet.
Yeah, the provision would go into effect one year after passage.
Alright, so anyway, we have a whole problem. Let's see if we can do something about it.
Yeah, so if you wanted to put something on the agenda, I'm sure you would come in and educate the whole board. That would be awesome, actually, right?
Could you send the contact information along? We'll invite you.
Yeah.
Awesome, then.
Already done, done that.
Uh, alright, uh, so uh, next meeting is uh, next week, uh, November twelfth, the special town meeting. That is Wednesday, right? Yes, yeah, alright, just making sure, that is uh, Wednesday, uh, November twelfth at Misco Middle School at seven P M. And uh, we will discuss and pass the motions on the warrant, hopefully. And then uh, November nineteenth, so we've got a couple Wednesdays here in a row, uh, right before the holiday. And um, yeah, then we'll see each other again in December. Alright, I'd be looking for a motion to adjourn. A discussion? All those in favor?
I.
All those against? Alright, meeting adjourned at seven thirty six P M. Have a great night, everybody. All right, meeting adjourned at seven thirty-six PM, have a great night, everybody.